Is it part of it? Oh, that blows. Okay.
You want me to call over all four?
Yeah.
Ms. Toll?
Here.
Mr. Maxon?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
And Chair McGlaughlin?
Here.
And I'm Laura Turway.
And Christina Robertson Gardner.
Okay, and we all are on here? Okay. Okay, so then we called it to order. So the first thing we need to talk about is a citywide historic survey.
Yeah, I just wanted to give everyone an update. It seems like the summer gone by and we finished up Phase Two of the citywide survey project. And to recap what we did this spring, Phase One was to do an intensive level resurvey of all of our 86 landmarks, and then to do a new, what we call reconnaissance level, or windshield survey of all structures not previously surveyed that are over 50 years old. And that came out to 1,700 properties.
Really?
And when we say windshield survey, we really mean it. It was photograph and maybe five characteristics. This is the site, and this is the date, this is the integrity, and maybe a comment. So very little, but the idea is to get broad concepts, or our next directions, or certain locations that we may want to look at in the future. That document you saw in May, where Diana Painter came and did her presentation, we just received the second phase, where initially we wanted to see if any proprietors wanted to have a, do a local landmark, and no proprietors wanted to move forward, so we decided to use that money to do preliminary work on a future National Register nomination for the elevator and the promenade. So that came back, and we have that document, and that's what we call Phase Two. Both were put online today, and a press release has come in, I think, a day or two from Painter Preservation, and our goal is to have it adopted at a public hearing next month for the HRB. So you'll get the whole document, and we can talk about it, a little bit why we want to do, and maybe talk about, you know, she has some recommendations for next steps, to talk with the Rivercrest Neighborhood Association, for example, to get them to understand what this survey can mean to them with long-range planning, like talking, Laura Turway will talk today about the TSP, or in general, for a local district, or just what they can do with this information, because they were identified as one area with higher concentration of significance. We also will have a whole database available online. I'm going to be working with GIS over the next month or two, so you'll be able to see every single data entry through a database portal that the State Historic Preservation does. I've also been invited to speak at the State Historic Preservation Office this next month to present our project, because they're really proud of it, so that was really neat. And I think it's really a great example of the next steps of integrating these bigger inventory projects with long-range planning. And so I'll be making a presentation for them at one of their kind of in-house meetings. So far, so good. I think now, really, the, it's done, so now we have to actually use it and implement it, and make sure it doesn't sit on a shelf, make sure we get that database into our larger GIS database, so when we start doing city projects, we can click on that layer to see, you know, significant, or contributing, not contributing. So if there's a planned intersection improvement, and all the buildings in that intersection are considered significant, well, maybe do we need to look at it a little bit differently? Or if there's an upzone request for a neighborhood of five or six parcels, and they're all considered, you know, majority of them are considered contributing, is that maybe the best use place to do upzoning? Conversely, if the city is looking at upzoning, upzoning means to have a higher density zone in a certain area, and nothing's contributing, that's a good piece of information to have when you're doing that larger analysis. So I'm hoping that these 1,700 properties will kind of, this information will populate whenever we do long-range planning, so, or even short-term planning. So I'm excited about that, and hopefully we'll get it into our whole GIS program. So that will come to you next month for adoption. It'll be just adoption through a resolution, but it just kind of makes it an official document. And then I'll work to see if we need to get it adopted at the City Commission level through resolution, just to make it even more official, if that's needed at all. So that's something I'll be looking into. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, just to clarify, you said there's 1,700 added properties that were never?
Correct.
So that's in addition to the ones that are already been identified?
So previously, we had inventoried landmarks, McGlaughlin Neighborhood, Kenema, and then all of the areas in the downtown Main Street.
Okay, so this wasn't just Rivercrest stuff?
No, this was everything. And we had showed a map last spring, and it's populated, and it goes all the way out to the urban growth boundary.
Wow.
So how many in total?
Seven, oh, total, I guess added up, maybe two, this is my brief math.
Works for me.
Back the napkin. I want to think we probably have about 2,600 properties inventoried.
What does the G stand for in GIS?
Geographic Information Services.
I have another question regarding, like, what does Rivercrest do with this information? Didn't know if they've been approached by William Gifford and the CDC.
No, that's the next step, is once it's adopted, to have that conversation with Rivercrest, the Neighborhood Association.
Would we invite them here?
I think we probably would want to go there, and maybe myself, and maybe somebody else from the board, we can pick a meeting this next year and meet with them, and let them understand that this document does not mean that they have to create a historic district.
Right, right, right.
Really, it can be used for them. It can be used as little as you can tear out that five pages and make a context statement brochure about your neighborhood, that you can put in your neighborhood newsletter, to as little as that, too, as far as you want to take it. So we can talk to them about all the different ways they could utilize this survey. So I'll be soliciting somebody this next, probably winter, after it's adopted to...
Vicki's replacement.
To go to one Neighborhood Association meeting.
Yeah. Wow, that's a lot of properties.
Did you not go through yours yet?
Does anybody have any other questions on the survey?
Who did you give the windshield survey?
No.
So that was a certified local government grant, and we are actually eligible to apply this next spring for our next round. So we'll be talking a little bit about what we want to do and for our next project.
So there is still money left over, right?
No, it's done.
That was used on the follow-up for the...
It was used on the Phase Two.
Phase Two, identifying, that's right, there was an X amount of dollars left.
Yep, so...
But you did some free work, then you turned it over or something.
Yeah, because we initially scoped out 1,500 properties, and then we added 200 more.
Yeah.
For a couple hours, I helped attach some photos. Wasn't that bad.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on number one, or A?
And then if I could add two more items tonight, real quick?
B and C?
Oh, after B and C, do you want, I could add it right now, or at the end of the...
Oh, go ahead, whatever.
Okay. You also see a draft letter, and the city is applying for a National Trust grant for the Erma Tinger House. It's not a big grant, but we think it's important to get a National Trust grant, because it gets that National Trust stamp of approval, that they like the Erma Tinger rehab. So this is a support letter.
Like how much?
It's $5,000.
Oh.
For a $700,000 project. But I think it's important for this first phase, because we're coalescing partners, we're applying for grants. We've been applying for a Preserve Oregon grant, which is $20,000 through the State Historic Preservation Office, that's due this week. We also applied for a Kinsman Foundation, they're a local preservation grant.
Milwaukee, right.
We haven't heard back from them, so we're hoping with a Kinsman, a Preserve Oregon, and a National Trust, these are kind of the preservation-related grants, we could then move forward with some of the larger, non-necessarily preservation-centered grants, like Spirit Mountain, Myer Memorial Trust, Oregon Cultural Trust, for the bigger money. But we needed kind of this first phase of kind of smaller money, but that seal of approval of State Historic Preservation Office signing off and supporting the project, National Trust sort of supporting the project. So I've just, this was just a draft, so if you, you don't have to do it now, but any comments you want for revisions or additions?
Just read it, and it looks great.
Did you have a chance to talk to Aunt Thea?
I've been working with Peggy Sigler, who's with our, she's our west, one of our Western National Trust representatives for Oregon.
And how about Peggy Moretti? Did she have any input?
Peggy's with the Historic Preservation League of Oregon.
Right, but I mean, I just...
So I've been working with Peggy Sigler, and she's been helping me figure out what's the best way to apply for this grant, so...
Okay, so she kind of like gave you guidelines on...
Yeah. So that this National Trust grant is helping to pay, they will help pay for architect and plans, which is exactly what we need for Phase One.
Really?
So it's perfect. It's a perfect segue.
I'm all for it. And I see John already signed it.
Yeah.
Apparently, I did.
That's where we wrote draft on it, so...
Yeah, it's my crappy signature.
And then...
Does the, do we have to take official action on approving?
No, you could just comment that you're...
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. And I just wanted to let you know with those grants coming up, we, I usually put an Erma Tinger House update, and I forgot, but we are busy, busy, busy writing grants right now. So hoping to move forward on what we call Phase One, which is hiring the architect and engineering team to start doing plans, and we're hoping to do that this, this winter.
She's all boarded up for winter, right?
Yep, all boarded up. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, so the meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
So the infill and additions was identified as a policy discussion at our work session goals this last spring. And to give a little context of what I'd like to do tonight, kind of the first night, I'd like to do a little PowerPoint presentation and talk a little bit about the compatibility infill survey, and see what your opinions were on this, to kind of gauge where we are as a board, and look at kind of all the different issues related to infill. And when we're kind of done with our discussion tonight, there could be many different avenues the board will undertake. They could be happy with the discussion, taking no more further action, and are happy with what we have adopted. Two, they could look at, you know, amendments to our design guidelines for new construction or additions to help flesh out some of the issues that were brought up. We could have conversations with the Neighborhood Associations. I mean, these are all options about kind of next steps. Nothing has to be done tonight, I've decided, but I think my goal is after we kind of talk about these issues, if there is a clear direction, kind of give that back to me, and if there's not a clear direction, maybe having another policy meeting or a future work session that maybe highlights a specific topic that the group wants to talk, to dive into more. But the compatibility survey was done by the Historic Preservation League of Oregon this year, because they're trying to help communities work on design guidelines for new construction. We have some documents created, but other cities do not, and some cities don't like the ones they have. And so one thing they were trying to do first is say, are there overarching themes that we could give to communities? And I attended Preservation Professionals Roundtable in August, and I left the meeting realizing that it's all about context, and it's, really, we're writing guidelines to say, depends.
Yeah, it's very, it's very good.
It's really hard, and that, it was, it was four hours of wrestling with, it depends, because every time you could come up with a scenario, someone could come up with an opposite scenario, the same kind of product, that would be inappropriate. So what the Historic Preservation League was doing with the survey is trying to see, you know, are we all thinking the same with these bigger themes, or is it what I felt at the meeting, which was just across the board, very different opinions on appropriateness? So before we start with that, I'd like to go through this PowerPoint with some photos, and talk a little bit about the Secretary of Interior Standards rendition, and Preservation Brief 14, which you had attached to your pack-in. I know some of the board has seen before, in regards in relationship to other projects. And then I put some photos of buildings that I'd be curious to see what your gut reactions are, if they were to be put in the McGlaughlin District.
There she is.
And...
Did you forget?
Miss America.
No, I had depositions in Salem.
Oh.
Just...
We're starting the fun part, so...
There's still food in there, if you want to...
I love some food.
Is that all right? Is there stuff there?
Go ahead.
You guys put it away.
Nope.
Yeah, go eat. We can keep rocking and rolling, right?
Can I here and there?
No.
All right, I'll be right back. Thanks.
Just keep going.
So, um, how do we get to that?
She could probably right here, couldn't she?
Push the switch.
Yeah. I think we can sit over here, and not next to the dials.
Yeah.
We just, we'll get our hands slapped if we let anybody eat next to the computers. I do not want to have that on my conscience.
No eating at the head table.
On streaming video that I've allowed somebody to eat. But we'll wait until the kick gets back. But so what I'd like to do when we talk about, when I show you the photos, I think a good site location would be Olson's Drug. So as we, I show some of these photos, use the Olson's Drug site, which is kind of the building that's been shelled right now, that's on Seventh.
What are you doing with that? It's been that way for like months.
So that might, that's a great building for, it's right on Seventh Street, it's a site location. What would you think about these build, these kind of buildings being there? So it's kind of, everyone's giving the same context when they're thinking about these buildings.
Yeah. As we're having this conversation, I think it'd be important to designate, if we're giving an example, whether it's relating to residential or commercial, because those are two very different things as we're talking about context.
And I have both, yeah.
Good.
And please, you know, I'm doing this, but if you just want to say, this is kind of an open discussion, so let's, you know, definitely break out and comment if it's warranted. You know, and if we feel that we're just both talking over each other, then definitely, John, you know, can wait a moment. But I don't want to be the me up front doing the pictures, and then no one talks, and then it's still, this is supposed to be kind of a robust discussion, so...
Going down with the Preservation Brief 14, it's all commercial.
Right.
That's the hard part.
But I think that's some of the rest, the commercial, I think, is some of our harder...
They are.
But we don't do much of that.
But we will. I know, in the next five years, there's gonna be a new commercial. There's, I just know there's gonna be, so...
Sometimes that's more important, you know, because they stand out more.
Right.
You know, they're like the cornerstone of the city.
You know, as an example, the institutional addition to the church, which was kind of quasi-commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so these are some examples from the Preservation Briefs of buildings that are compatible and do not fake history. So always think of this kind of teeter totter of making sure design guidelines are compatible but don't fake history. So if they go on one side or the other, you still may not end up with a compatible building. So these are really...
Wait, I don't have it.
Turn your thing.
Do the hard...
I'm only confused with the things, or this.
Out of range, do not operate.
Okay, is that it?
We've had that before, but I don't know what caused that.
You can see the...
For the most part.
Okay. So this is a perfect example of what we talk about, of a simple, simpler version of the historic building. So the new addition is on the left. It retains the same fenestration rhythm, it has the same kind of cornice treatment, but everything is just simpler. And so you clearly can see that it is an addition. This is kind of a classic example of the Secretary of Interior Standards treatment for additions. This is another kind of classic example, the Art Deco building, then they added the ma, the full glass kind of entryway, and then the new addition is on the right. So once again, it's still a very simplified art deco, but you can tell that's the new addition. Hold that pot.
There you go, same video.
So, I mean, when people talk about those additions, I think those are universally agreed upon as being appropriate. I mean, you'll pull almost every preservation professional, anybody a supporter of preservation, and you'll get kind of the hands up of, yep, 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 that's, that's good. So those are the ones that I don't think anybody's arguing about. So what I'll show you next is kind of the simplified addition that's just slightly more modern than what you previously saw. Sorry. So one more, very traditional. You'll see the historic church on the right, and then the contemporary kind of church office. Once again, it's taking the same form of massing, but a much simpler version. So that's kind of a standard, and it's kind of oblique, and it's just, there's, once again, there's probably like a little breezeway between the two buildings, but they really, they really are, almost count for two different buildings, but that is...
The armatures.
Yeah. That is kind of another classic example. This is another one, this is, you'll see the elevator tower to your right, and then they have some of the, kind of the glass panels in the middle, simplified version. But I actually would argue that it's too compatible. I'd actually rather have it a little more simplified on the right. So this is, you'll see another one, the white Art Deco addition, and once again, same fenestration, same kind of feeling, simplified version. So these are kind of the classic. And then you'll see that kind of breezeway that connects the two is inset. So these are also compatible, and they still don't fake history, but it's just a little more modern approach. So this is on the rear of the building. You can tell it's a much bigger lot. It's a two-story volume, but it still utilizes some of the predominant characteristics of the window design, but it's definitely more modern. This actually is a project I was involved with. This is the Kimpton-Monica Hotel in DC. It's two U-shaped buildings together that create a central courtyard through kind of a portico entrance on either side. And this was the restaurant patio, and they built this glass addition. No one can see it from the outside. Now, the question would be, and I asked this to Laura, what if this was just on the outside of a building? So it wasn't in the U, this was the outside, and you were standing on the street looking at the rear, would it still be okay?
I think it hides the buildings. I think, but I don't think it would be okay.
Would it be okay if this was a five-story building? I mean, those are kind of things about context.
Yeah, maybe.
And I want, I mean, definitely, speak up. Tell me what you think.
Is it directly attached to the rest of the building?
This is, at some point, it is directly, I mean, there is a point, I can't remember if it was all back.
It's a pretty small attachment.
There's a, there's a, there's a point where it's, there's an entry.
Well, I think it's distinctive of the time. It was probably built in the early 90s.
Late 90s.
Late 90s, okay. Yeah, it doesn't try and replicate what's there. I think it's very simple. The only difference really that we're looking at here is it's simple as in glass, rather than simple as in large brick facade.
Yeah, but it's hiding the architecture of the building that's in front of it.
But we're assuming, this isn't actually, very much the interior, so you're absolutely surrounded by these buildings.
You're asking if it was at the front.
But the question is, if this was in the rear of a building?
No, if that, this is in the front.
No, no, not the front. If this was in the rear of the building, and you're looking at the street behind it, would it still be okay?
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Oh, because it is in the rear, but I thought you meant as if it's in the front.
No, no, if it's in the rear of the building.
Is it centered in the portico, in the center area?
No, no, it's on, it's on the edge.
On one side?
It's on one side.
It's groovy.
This is another example of a glass addition on the rear of a building that cooks up. You often see these kind of very small, I think this is fine. The question is, as these glass buildings get, connector buildings get bigger and bigger, and the massing gets bigger, is there a point when they are too big for the historic building? And so that's always a question. I think most people would be fine with this in the rear, because it's very small, this was probably a four or five-story, larger brick building. So this, this is really so small and nasty, but as these really simple glass connectors become bigger, when do they get too big? So that's, that's always a bit of a question. So these are not compatible, or they fake history. So these are perfect examples. This one I often like to show, because a lot of people don't see this as being necessarily a bad thing. It's a very well-designed addition, but when you look at it, it absolutely change, changes the original architecture of the historic building and loses its context. So I think this is a really good example of when an addition gets so big, and it's so overly designed, that you can't tell which is original and which is historic. Or that this was a smaller house, and now you're done with, you're done with, you're finished with a larger house. So this does not meet the Secretary of Interior standards for additions.
It's on a corner.
And it's at a corner, exactly.
Straight on, you would see it, but it's prominent from a corner perspective.
Exactly.
If it was an infill lot...
You're right, and the two other homes were larger, maybe not.
Wouldn't be a big deal.
You're right.
On a narrow lot, you would hardly notice it.
Yeah. Everyone can agree that this is absolutely inappropriate, so it's always nice to show one that everyone can agree upon.
What is that?
It's like a 1970s... What is to follow the lines, doesn't it?
1965 school addition or something.
Oh, so that's a classroom name?
I don't know. Whatever it is, it's totally inappropriate.
Still got the wheels underneath it.
I don't know.
Wow.
So that is so, I mean, sense of, well, now that's a question, now, what if, but what if that box was like a Philip, Philip Glass house, and was just all glass? Would that be okay?
Well, if it was like a big atrium, you know, that might work.
The large pergola-looking thing, that's the addition, right? I came through...
No, it's the, it's the box.
It's the boxes, right, left side.
The thing about the box is, if it had to ever be removed, it wouldn't destroy the interior.
That's true, and that's one of the Secretary of Interior standards, correct.
Yeah. And it's so much far away that you could actually just slide it away, and you'd never know.
Yeah, but I think it's still very much in, because that's the front door, you still very much can see it.
Oh, it's bad, but I'm just saying, if you had to...
That's true.
It wouldn't destroy the building.
It's bad, but not the worst.
It's pretty bad.
Here's an example, the upper two floors were part of the original design but were never built.
Oh.
And it's okay.
The Secretary of Interior standards felt it didn't meet it, because it was recreating something that was never built. It's not like it was demolished and you're restoring something.
It's fulfilling.
So you're, they believe you're creating a false sense of history, by rebuilding...
But it was part of the original design.
But it was never built.
That's right.
So that means that it doesn't...
Right, and so that, but then, here's the next question, would it be okay if it wasn't part of the original design?
Would it not be okay if it was built this way originally?
Right, but what if it was never planned, but they built that? Would it be okay?
I think the look of it would not be, probably not be okay. I mean, you look at Fred Myers Building downtown, just a...
Maureen and Maureen Frank?
Maureen Frank, yeah.
Yeah.
From Painter Court, L Square. It's pretty obvious that four-floor addition on top looks so different. It doesn't try and mimic it. I think if this was an add-on, it would look too close to the same, but...
Yeah, it never had that historically, whether it was planned or unplanned, it was never part of this.
But see what John's saying, that you have different opinions in preservation circles. Now, the Secretary of Interior has made a, had made a defining judgment.
Right.
That recreation of building parts that were designed but never built fake a history. And I'm sure that there is, there will always be an example that bypasses that, but in general, they said...
Yeah, it's a silly rule.
I didn't, I didn't go on, but a good example, they have a whole page in Secretary of Interior standards for Preservation Brief 14 about how you look at rooftop additions, and I didn't put it on there, but it's very good, you know.
From street level.
They're really, they're really great ways, and you know, if you have a building with a high parapet, you can usually almost, and it's over maybe four stories tall, you can usually always sneak in an extra rooftop addition. sneak in an extra rooftop addition. It's just, and it's been done all over, and there's just really easy to, to follow rules about how you do it. So these are really great examples of horrible additions that are.
Really, that's a terrible one.
These are by foils. So everyone clearly says that these would be inappropriate, both in compatibility and faking history. I don't know if you can fake history in that, but these were never that, were never that big. So here's some other infill questions, and please tell me your gut opinion and why. And I'm sure we'll get different answers. So, Vicki, I was telling everybody, think, because we all want to have the same context, so think of the Olson Drug property as your context for every building, only because it's a nice main street, except for the two residential, which, think of a McLaughlin site. And some of these are near my neighborhood, so that's why I chose them, but I, I think that they, they, they all, all of them are an example of a kind of a head scratcher, would this be appropriate in our McLaughlin Conservation District? First one, pretty modern.
Isn't that where Fife's was originally? Yeah, and then something else, I drove by that yesterday, so it's cool, I liked the building.
So what about if it was in the Olson site?
No. I don't think it would work there.
Why?
I think the massing's too big, and I think that, it just, it's the squareness of it, you know, the sharp corners, the sharp.
I'm sorry.
You know, the flat roof, I don't mind, but it's all the sharp edges.
It was cool looking. It's a cool building.
Let me throw something out, what is the difference between this and the Red Soils Building that the, your office is in, other than a paint job?
Because Red Soils isn't in a historic district.
Let's question, what if that was in the historic district? Now, granted, what they, was there was Keith Brown lumber, which was even more inappropriate. So, yeah, that's actually a good question. If the building that I'm in was actually inside the district boundaries, would it be okay, knowing that it was not new construction, it's a rehab of a non-contributing building? A lot like what Ben James did on Seventh Street.
Yeah, because the building that you guys are in looks like this one three times over.
I don't think it would be appropriate in downtown Oregon City, I don't think so.
I would, only because Oregon City needs all the help it gets, so.
Yeah, but you just don't want to grab anything, because it's new.
Everybody else has up to this point.
That's the problem.
Well, let's think about the slide that was one before this, or two before this, where we had a historic building with a glass box that was kind of in a concrete shell above it. At some point in time, someone bought the building and said, okay, we're going to tear it down, or we're going to do this to it.
And also, here's a question, I mean, this actually has, is almost the same dimension as a false front building. So it meets the same historic dimensions as our historic buildings. So massing-wise, I think it's okay, massing, size-wise, design-wise is the question. And I'm actually okay with it, because it's so simple.
Yeah.
But I can absolutely see, to me, this is a perfect example of kind of that right at the edge, when, you know, would it not be appropriate?
And it's right at the edge because?
Um, what, well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Olson's, and we do have a little bit more false front architecture, and so maybe, could you take this and have a little bit node, could you kind of take this design and have a little bit more nod to what was commercially there, but still be modern? Could this be kind of tweaked a little bit? I don't know. But I, for, massing-wise, I'm actually okay with this in the district, but it's a tough one, I don't, I think that simplicity helps it. All right, here's another one, this is also just down the street. Brand-new, tilted-up concrete, one-story, all retail.
I think that's totally appropriate.
This is brand-new?
Well, it's five years old, but, you know, newish.
But if you're to take the Olson's and cut out the cells and throw in just flat storefront glass, it's pretty much the same thing, so.
This is not, but these are not wood storefronts, this is, you know, turn to.
Aluminum.
Aluminum storefronts.
Olson's had aluminum storefronts.
All right, so imagine a smaller version, obviously Mercy Corps will not be built at McLaughlin, but take maybe the first story, or maybe the first two stories, and I was showing Laura, like, maybe in your head, like, squish it down to what a 50 by 100 version, maybe two stories would be. Would that ever be okay in McLaughlin?
It depends on what it was surrounded with, I think.
Where, where at Olson's?
Where Olson's.
So we all can just have the same con.
That's a little too modern.
So why, why, why was it, why is it too modern for the Conservation District?
Because it's just too modern.
It's all glass, yeah.
Just too modern. It needs to take elements from the, of the buildings around it, it needs to take some kind of, some kind of cue from the architecture around it.
Like the first story.
And see, for Mercy Corps, it is taking a little cue, because this is a five-story brick building that it's taking its cue from, and we don't have a five-story brick building. I, I agree a little bit with, let's see, do you stay?
Yeah, I think when you're redeveloping an entire lot, and not salvaging the building, it's, it's tough to pull it into context, and Olson's has no context that relates to this, it's a gorgeous building. And I'd love to see something like this downtown Oregon City, but I doubt it would make it through a design review down there either.
Question is.
Yeah, it just says type-two staff decisions, it probably wouldn't mean it.
The thing is, you're saying, here's buildings in historic districts that have had these things done, whether you think this is tasteful or not, it's here. Why couldn't something like that be applied here any more than any other district?
Well, that's my question. I mean, this is kind of a robust discussion.
Yeah, but I'm, but you can't, you know, you could shoot down everything that looks modern, or you say, here's something that obviously they dealt with.
Well, there's, there's historic districts that have edges that, you know, go into the residential area, and then like Seventh Street. We're talking about Seventh Street, where we've got the commercial, mostly commercial buildings down there that don't look like.
Right, so think of a really simplified version of, of this building on Seventh Street.
Yeah.
So it's just one story, it's just, you know, very.
Where you live in.
So it's like, take Mercy Corps building, and go back and kind of apply it to that massing. Would that ever be appropriate?
This, that might work, maybe, you know, that, that might work, maybe, but it depends on what was surrounding it. Well, yeah, I can't remember what's surrounding Olson's, but, yeah, because it's on a corner, it might work, because it's kind of on an edge.
See, this is good, this is what I'm, what's our goal for tonight. Mississippi Lofts is a perfect example, the Mississippi Historic District is a conservation district, or, no, no, don't quote me on that, but they don't have this high-level review, and there's been some question about the massing of some of these lofts on Mississippi, and if they're appropriate next to kind of smaller, single-family homes.
Oh, I would, I would like to talk about this, because this is a big thing in Northwest Portland, that they're going through, and even in the Hollywood District. And to some extent, we have to keep in mind that we're trying to match things that were built 100, 130 years ago, with the same densities and same aesthetics, and the question is, should we be doing that? Is that appropriate? Or are we trying to recreate history? And I think this kind of gets back to that, that issue. If this was, let's say, three different buildings, would it be appropriate? I think that's why they changed the siding type, you know, it's obviously all one building, but if you go to certain parts of Northwest Portland, I think there's 21 or 23, I saw a survey at one point in time, of essentially identical building, that's a center entry with apartments on each side, which are studios that run a length back, and the lots 50 feet wide by 100 feet deep, and that's just kind of how it goes. And this looks like it's recreating that rhythm in the Mississippi District. The lofts in Northwest are three stories high, and this looks like it's.
Three.
Uh, four, it has a penthouse up above, but has a false front that goes up three stories. So I, I think it's, I think it's a good point of discussion. I think it's appropriate. It's not a monolith of a building.
Anybody else? There was a salvo thrown up. Comments about Mississippi lofts, and kind of, I think this is just an example of what we're seeing on Belmont, and Hawthorne, and Division, kind of these larger, more modern apartment structures, and when are they ever appropriate in a historic district?
Well, the, the Mississippi lofts that I see here seem to not be dissimilar from the, what's it, the, the renovation, renovation place that has.
The rebuilding center.
Rebuilding Center, is a huge mass of building, really interesting building. And it seems like what we're looking at on our screen fits right in, mass-wise and look-wise to the.
But this is farther up the street, and there are a lot, probably three, four blocks.
Three blocks.
You're getting up, you're going up there, almost to like Prost, you're getting up to Shaver.
Is this in a historic district?
Yes, Mississippi is a, is a type of historic district.
When I was, I was at Mississippi not long ago, for the first time in a long, long time, and I don't think I went up far enough to see these lofts, but down in the heart of it, there were some, what I consider to be pretty inappropriate buildings, that were really tall, colored buildings. They were, they were brightly colored, and they had storefronts below and apartments above, you know what I'm talking about? I didn't think they fit in at all.
And then there's the kind of New Orleans design one, which I was, I like architecturally, but it's kind of odd for, Sid, but, you know. Yes, I mean, there's this massing question, so, you know, there's modern, and then there's massing in modern, and I can tell you, my personal opinion is, I don't mind modern if you keep the mass down, but I have a trouble with modern and large massing.
What about this?
That's kind of where I.
What about this?
If it was, well, also, obviously, the Olson version would be smaller. That's a hard one for me, because I know there are single-family homes kind of right behind it, but not, but in Olson's case, there's the dentist office behind it, so maybe that's the block where it's a little bit okay. You know, there was up in my neighborhood, there's also some, well, a lot like this, and the neighbor behind it's the cemetery, and I think that's a great use of adding density on a main street on Fremont, because you aren't, you pack your density next to the cemetery, you know? You don't have the neighbors, you know? That's the place where you can, you know, do that. So there are times, there's sometimes contexts where it might be appropriate.
Well, the, the building where Weatherford's was, is a huge building, just huge, so I don't think it would be inappropriate to put a, a large building just a few blocks up.
Or if the city ever redeveloped its parking lot, could this be right next to it? That's a great question.
Well, I don't think that massing should be the only criteria, when they say, when they're giving you recommendations to blend in, they don't usually just say mass, you know, one element. I think it should be massing and another element that takes a cue from the neighborhood.
So you're saying it could be massing, keep it appropriate.
Keep it, keep it massing appropriate.
And maybe the architecture, but maybe your materials are more modern, or, or maybe your more traditional materials, but your design is more modern.
Yeah, the roof line, the shape of the, the window, something that connects.
Isaac. All right. This was one, I remember when I was in grad school, it was always talked about. This is the Dosia Salon Building, Northwest 23rd, it's the Anne Sacks Building. This, of course, Google Street View is in the spring, so I had all the, but this is right on Gleason, behind 23rd, and it's, was done before Northwest was a historic district, but it is your, your glass box.
So are we looking at it before and after, or starting back?
No, up on the right is from the website, and down below is Google Maps, but the trees are blocking some of the views. So here's this example of a four-story, very glass-intensive building in a historic district. And does, does glass make it lighter, and therefore more appropriate, or because it's four stories, no matter what the material is, it's just not appropriate?
You know, it's hard to make these judgments, because we can't see what's around them, we can't see what they're, you know, what they're in relation to.
Yeah, so, well, I can tell you what's relationship to this building is, right on 23rd is where Noah's Bagels is, and it was, it's kind of a, a larger craftsman building. And then, right next door to your right of this is a infill Good Sam Hospital-related building, so it's kind of, that part of Gleason's is a bit of a hodgepodge.
Well, I think there's a real issue that we have to address with respect to economic viability of a neighborhood, and what kinds of buildings, and how tall does a building have to be to get enough people living there and walking streets to make the, the businesses viable, versus what did it look like 100 years ago, and do we want to maintain that? And I think there has to be a happy medium.
Right.
Because you, you want to encourage more foot traffic, you can't have more foot traffic unless you have more people living and working there, therefore you need taller buildings.
Right, and I don't think that that, I don't think that just because, because of those things, you couldn't tweak the architecture just a little bit to make it slightly more compatible to the, its surrounding areas.
And this is a perfect example of, it's the big glass box architecture. I mean, this just, there's many, many variations of this building, but very simple glass box, which some people say is very compatible in historic district, because it's so simple that it doesn't compete with the other buildings, but if it's four stories, do you lose that argument?
Then it does compete.
Well.
But maybe this area, it's fine, because you're in a, a more dense, um, commercial district.
A lot of things in this neighborhood are four stories plus, and you're also in a hillside, so as you go one block over, everything's actually taller than it, though it's not four stories tall. And just a, just a side note, the stricter we are, the more opportunities we lose out on, so we've got to balance that. This is the only building from Oregon that made it to Fannin's Atlas of Modern Architecture, so it's not historic piece.
I mean, it's, it's a beautiful building, I love it.
But, yeah.
So that's why I chose it, because I think it's.
It's historic, go ahead.
Oh, that's why I chose it, because I really like it as a piece of architecture, I think it's a really nice piece of modern architecture, and if, when you're in, as I was in Dosia Salon one time, I mean, it's beautiful from the inside, it's beautiful looking outside, you get that whole inside-outside feel, I mean, it is everything you want from a modern building, I think, for that true modern glass building. But the, the larger question is, is it okay in its context?
What's your thought, John?
I don't know, I think, so you take like that Olson joint, and you stick a modern building in there from, when I say modernism, from international style, from the 50s, late 40s, 50s, that there are areas of commercial areas that are those historic buildings, the, the glass buildings, and what if you plopped in a historically accurate international style, like a Mies van der Rohe building that fits in there? Could you do that and get away with it? Or is because there's no such context to Seventh Street to make it appropriate? I look at it as, there's so much junk on Malala, and there's such a dichotomy of good and bad, that could you go wrong? Because.
Well, I don't think Seventh Street is not Malala, I think.
Well, it's all that, right there.
Seventh Street's got a little bit more.
Well, yeah, but the district ends at East, you're right before Eastham, so once you get into Malala, you're outside of the.
Okay, then, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because up there is a mess.
Well, and a good, a good point of discussion that I heard at the Preservation Roundtable was Bill, I can't remember his name, sorry, talking about context of the district. So you have the Skidmore Old Town Historic District, which has one of the best examples of cast iron architecture in, in the US, but lots of parking lots. So if every single parking lot had a Mercy Corps building on it, would we lose what makes the Skidmore Old Town District special? Because.
Because it stands out.
Because you're, you've, you've dropped the, the balance there. As a foil, what if you had one, I mean, like, you're in Soho, and you have a whole street of row houses, and someone does a really fantastic, modern infill row house.
And there's exactly.
That might be fine, because you have a whole context of what the historic building is, and you can put those, that modern infill, but when you have a district that's a lot more disjointed, it maybe, might be harder to have, it might be easier and quicker to lose what makes a district special, because you don't have that quality.
But that's a contradiction, you just said it's disjointed, so if there's not a unifying theme that pulls it all together.
Well, that's maybe, and maybe as long as the new infill doesn't have a unified theme, you know, that they still can remain in the background and not, as I drive, and just something, picture, if I drove through Skidmore Old Town, and every single parking lot had a brand-new, modern building on it, would I still get the feeling of the cast iron neighborhood that was there and that we're trying to honor?
Yeah, it's just like, you know, Willamette, with, Handers went through, and put all those buildings in that kind of make it look Disneyland-esque, you know, they're trying to recreate the history.
Main street.
And I have to admit, I, I approved a couple of those years ago on that board, but, you know, the context is, you got to have these buildings with the different storefronts and everything, and you can tell they're fake, but they don't really fit in, I mean, they work, but there's a dichotomy there.
Right, and that's, you know, there might be an urban design planning principles that may be different than historic.
Right.
District, that whole faking history, you know, may be great for urban design, walkability and sense of place and what we want for that, but.
And you know.
It's not creating, it is the only feeling, exactly.
The restaurant, is it still Weatherford's, or what's it called?
No, it's called High Cliff.
High Cliff? Okay, so across the street is that parking lot, and then there's the fence place where I think a chiropractor was going to build something years ago, and I don't know what it is now, so there's a perfect example of somebody will eventually build on that lot, and what is a historic-looking building?
It's a 50 by 100 lot.
Yeah, is that going to be a historic-looking fake building, or will that be something that, like this, that might want to stand out, because the, the bar next to it is, you know, that section of buildings is nothing to brag about, you got a 7-Eleven, so.
Okay, my concern with, with this, and with the guidelines that we're talking about, and putting them into verbiage, and having them as something that we go by, because this board is not always going to be the same board.
Absolutely.
And we're going to, if we leave them too loosey-goosey, then what if somebody wants And we're gonna, if we leave them too loosey-goosey, then what if somebody wants to put a glass block, a glass building every 500 feet whenever there's an empty lot? I mean, before you know it, you could lose your sense of-
Well, that's, that's exactly, and that's the, the question.
Sure.
All right, well, let me-
Yeah, well, let's, um, talk about Manhattan. There are a lot of glass buildings in Manhattan.
That's cool.
But Manhattan is Manhattan, and this is Oregon City. It's just like apples and oranges.
Well-
The Big Apple.
The Big Apple and the Big Orange.
My, my point is, there's a lot of historic buildings in New York as well, and, um-
Well, they're pretty much dwarfed in Manhattan.
More, more of them.
Okay, fine.
Everything's ginormous.
Everything is, but my point is, there's old buildings with glass boxes, and I, I think that's a way of looking at it. You can look at, um, let's, uh, I can't think of a smaller scale.
Right here at Fremont, right where that building is, you go right in, and then you're into old homes. And when I drive through there, and I have a lot lately, I, it doesn't, I don't, you know, I go in a block, and I see homes, and it doesn't seem to have an impact.
Yeah, but, but granted, but, uh, buildings on Fremont, except for one or two cases, are two stories max.
But it still doesn't bother me. You can do the same thing here, hey, that building can only be, can't be any taller than what's around it, or-
Well, you talked about it a little bit, then that's kind of that massing issue. You know, three and four stories, it gets harder to approve.
Potentially, someday, someone will fill in that vacant lot, and that'll be a sticky wicket. It'll be coming before some people on this board, whoever it is, and that'll be a tough one. Because that'll be the first real challenge. I don't know what's going on at that Olson thing. Are they, is there a plan with it? Do they have to go before and do it?
They will, they will have to.
Right now, they're just kind of taking around and-
They're moving slowly. That's about all I can give you.
It's almost like they've taken everything out but a couple feet of concrete.
I thought maybe they'd done it and I missed it.
But that's eventually gonna have to come before this board, whoever they do.
So let me move on. This is an example of residential infill. This was a vacant lot, um, for 50 years.
It was a magazine or something, it was a magazine or-
And it's just off Wisteria Drive, as you pop up Alameda. And, um, to me, it is, oh, it's a perfect example of a modern building that's absolutely compatible with its neighbors.
Yeah, but it looks southwestern on the bottom and modern on the top. You know, it looks out, like it could be southwestern on the bottom, and modern, Chinese modern on the top.
But Cindy, in this, in this neighborhood, it's a revival 20s neighborhood, so you have Mediterranean Revival, you have Tudor Revival, you have lots of really interesting revival buildings.
Yeah.
So it, it, it really works. And, and when you, the way it's nestled in, I mean, this is just one view from Google Maps, but it, it is, oh, it absolutely receives into prominence from every other building. So I've always thought of this as like the crown of a modern building in a historic district that, that one person designed perfectly. But it does, it, it really, really works in Alameda. And it's just off of, uh, uh, 41st and Alameda. Or 41st and Wisteria. Yeah, there we go, 300 and Wisteria. Um, this is the polar opposite.
Oh, my God.
It is, I don't know if you've been dri, if you've driven by, um, 38th and Burnside.
38th and Burnside?
It was a vacant lot, and, um, it was infilled, and actually, this is, just won an AIA award this year. Um, but to me, um, the juxtaposition of this house on, with all the, um, Burnside Laurelhurst homes, oh, it's really jarring when you drive there. And I don't know if I'd necessarily comment on the architectural style, but it's super jarring on Burnside.
Well, I, I can tell you, this stops my heart. I mean, I, if this was at the beach or somewhere else, I'd say, hey, that's really cool. But when I was, I was president of the Laurelhurst Neighborhood Association, when we tried to get the neighborhood to agree to regulations for demolition and new construction only, just to prevent this kind of thing, because it is so incredibly out of place in that neighborhood.
Yeah, Laurelhurst has very, I mean, all of Laurelhurst was built within a 10-year period. All the homes have the same massing, they have the same identity. This is an example of, you know, if it wasn't-
Is it actually in Laurelhurst, or across the street?
No, it's on 30th and Burnside, in the middle heart of Laurelhurst.
Yeah, in the middle.
So when you drive there, it's a vacant, it was a lot, a house, and I remember the house that was taken down. I went on Google Maps, it was a vacant lot, uh, because Google Maps is always like a year too old. Um, but, uh, it, uh, now the question I asked Laura was, if you took this and twisted it, and you just saw the side profile, would it be as bad?
Is this on the south side of Burnside?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would.
So anyway, this is, this is kind of that, you know, there's this, which I think is, you know, a modern building that absolutely works within its context of its neighbors.
Did you say 30th or 38th?
38th. So it's just west of the 39th and Burnside intersection.
Is this a historic district?
No.
Okay.
I don't understand how that-
Same zone, you know.
Because it's politically not a historic district, but it could absolutely be a historic district if they, if they wanted it.
Oh, so it isn't a historic?
It is not.
Oh, so that's how they got away with it.
But it's, it's compatible, I mean, it's contributing, it, it meets all the criteria. It's just a political will that it's not a historic district.
I understand. I would, why I was asking, because I was wondering how they would get that passed.
Yeah.
It would just got a building permit from the city of Portland.
Oh, man.
So I think this is an example of what people worry about when they hear modern architecture. I think this is what people's fears are in a historic district. Whereas when I see it, I sometimes think of this, and I don't want to disallow this as potentially an option. I think it works really well. You know, in the context of what Alameda is, granted, this may not be perfectly met for a hill in McLaughlin, but, um, I think context does a lot.
Yeah, we have to write the guidelines, then really kind of, to, to address stuff like that.
Well, right, and right now, the guidelines say, these are the guidelines if you want a quick path to approval. These are not the only guidelines. We say, if you want to propose an alternative, it's up to you, the burden is, the burden is completely on you to make your case. So it's not that this person couldn't come in to the historic review board on, in an Oregon City version of this.
Yeah.
And it's not that the board could not approve this. They could. But the burden is really on, I mean, even though the burden's always on the applicant, it's, it's really on the applicant when they choose an alternative to not, and we say that in that, that one page. And, um-
Do you still want to call them guidelines, or do you want to call them?
Well, they are guidelines, because they are not clear and objective. That, that's what they are. I mean, if you, there's one, one thing that cities, some cities have done, and I would not recommend this, because I think we work well in Oregon City, but some cities have said, here's a very prescriptive house you could build. You know, it's this perfect little unglue. And you could build this house, or something very close to this, through a staff approval. Everything else goes in front of the historic review board. So it kind of gives this two-tiered approach. Um, I, I worry that we would just be getting lots and lots of those little bungalows. Um, I think we work well as a small city, being able, and I think the way the historic review board, it's not that onerous.
I agree, we don't want to go down that road.
Right, we don't want to go down that, but that's why some cities have done that.
But that's because that's who we are now. But what, who are we gonna be in 10 years?
But that's always a way of, you can always create that, this is, if you don't have any imagination, you can build this. Because we've, we've created it for you.
Yeah.
And everything else goes in front of you, but that does scare people off. And then we end up getting lots of this, so. Um, but guidelines are specifically that, they're guidelines.
And if you don't leave room for flexibility or growth, then you end up with an effortlessly black area because nothing happens.
Well, I believe in doing that, but I don't, I, I also think that you can end up with something like that orange house if you don't have some kind of stopping point. You know?
Well, I can pretty much guarantee you that there'll be at least three people on this panel at any point in time that wouldn't allow that in the McLaughlin. Now, I can't say anything about Rivercrest.
Well, see, and River, yeah. And there's, Rivercrest has lots of identities. There's 1930s sections of Rivercrest that were, that still would not be appropriate. And then there's some 1950s parts, where maybe a smaller, you know, maybe not as big, but maybe more ranch version of that might be fine.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's what I have for my photos, but I was hoping that this would, which is why, it'll elicit some discussion. Um, and these are issues that are not, every community wrestles with this issue, and every community has to come up with their little place where they want to be, you know? And there's not necessarily, except for, you know, maybe here, and some of the others, there's, and some of the ones that, you know, here, there's no, the wrong answers are here. And then there's a lot of gray in the middle. And we can, we can choose where we want to be gray, and that's okay. We have the ability as a city to kind of swim within that gray area. And, um, that's kind of, I think, the larger discussion of how we want to define that gray.
Yeah.
And do we want to closer define it, or are we okay with being in that larger, kind of allowing all of that gray to kind of happen?
I think we need to closer define it, not a lot, but some. Just so that in case, you know, you get a different kind of a board, that they'll have more, got, you know, more direction. Like if you go, if you go away, you've been instrumental in helping us figure things out, because you've been here longer. But if, if you go away, then you get a fresh, new panel of people. I think we need to define it just a little bit more, to see what Oregon City needs to, you know, needs to accept and not accept.
I'd like to come back to the glass box discussion. And I think, uh-
Oops, sorry.
We should, uh, take a drive, uh, if not together, independently, down Hawthorne, uh, between 28th and, um, 52nd, where it-
Hippieville, man.
Turns over and runs into, uh, Division. Because there's a lot of old buildings there of similar scale, to which I think 7th Street should be. Um, and if it's ever gonna be developed, those infill lots will probably be about that size.
And Hawthorne's not a historic district?
It's not.
And they have glass boxes there that have been built because of that.
Yeah, but it's not a historic district.
But my point is, I think we, you should drive down the street, take a look at what's there, and see if it's appropriate. If you think, no, those few glass boxes that are there, or large, flat facades, completely destroy the entire neighborhood, well, sure, then, then that's something. But if, if you feel like they aren't breaking down the overall feeling of the place, I mean, that vastly changes the conversation.
And I think something that's always inherent in this conversation, and it's always hard to articulate, we're always, when people talk about modern architecture, I, I'm, for the most part, most, everything I'm showing you is good design. It's not, may not be appropriate, but I think everyone agrees badly constructed and badly designed.
Right, right, right.
Strip-molly things, we're not talking about that. We're talking about quality design.
Appropriateness.
Modern architecture. Is it inappropriate within a historic district? So you kind of have to assume that they'll, we're not talking about the level of design down here, we're talking about the higher level of design.
Yeah.
Because that's inherent of, yeah, sure, the strip mall, stucco, see, you know, stucco building may not be appropriate anywhere. You know, we're not, that, that, that's what that goes without saying.
For the record, I don't like the one on Wisteria.
You don't?
No, not at all.
What, what do you like about it?
Just about everything.
I know, it's been-
Yeah.
Other than that, it was like it, um-
It, it kind of pulls from Arts and Crafts with Little Gate down the front up to this big stairway. And, you know, dealing with a slope side is oftentimes difficult. It looks like they salvaged the garage doors, um-
There is that, that, Google has a slight cross on the photo, so-
Oh, oh, sure, yeah. But, um, the, the round balcony, the Juliet-type balcony, you can just pull it out of that one.
That is kind of the 90s architecture. But I, I take the larger concept, I, I actually, I'm a, I don't like the balcony either. But the larger concept, I think it works with the revival neighborhood of Alameda.
Not saying it doesn't, I'm just, for the record, I think it's a good one.
What if the balcony was taken out, and it didn't have the front railings?
I think it's mixing two different, too many ar, two, two different architectures. Like it's southwestern on the bottom and Chinese on the top.
Yeah. I, I really didn't want to get into taking this one, you said, we all agree.
Okay, sorry, you're right, you're right. I think I've always been impressed, I've always been impressed how well it nestles into the hillside, because you really don't notice it. That's what I've always been impressed by.
I can't see it from my house.
Oh, you mean like when you drive down the street?
Yeah, when you drive on Wisteria, you drive, it just, it's not, um, it's not, it just-
It's not distinctive.
It's not distinctive, it, it does not become a, an element, it's not that big new house that you see before you see all the historic homes around it. It, it becomes one home of many, and it melds to it.
The important part is, the person who paid for it loves it.
Yeah.
I guess you look at it as, they have to stay as guidelines, because what really dictates how things can interpret is personality.
Well, here's a question, Derek. Would you, I, now, I'm not saying this building, if you, let's say this was the Alameda Historic Review Board, because it's hard to translate this in McLaughlin. Would you categorically say no? Knowing that it did, or would you just make, you know, put conditions for tweaking, tweaking the, some of those parts to it?
You know, I'm not familiar with this neighborhood, um-
It's a nice neighborhood of big, old homes.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't bash an architect for having bad design skills. I mean, if it's, if it's a compilation of, and that's just my opinion. Um, but if it's just a compilation of, of old revivals, and someone's trying to restore a stucco, I don't know what this is.
This is a brand-new vacant lot.
Sure, but, but it's a, it's a neighborhood full of revivals, like you said, Mediterranean Revival.
Mediterranean Revival.
And I, I see the Tudor right behind it, or right next to it.
Yeah, it's, it's basically Tudor, Mediterranean, Crafts, Arts and Crafts.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just weird.
This is also 1995.
Looks like they tried to do a cheap knockoff of, uh, Miller Hole.
Miller Home, of a?
Uh, Miller Hole.
Oh.
Is that, never know.
Really nice architect, Ozzy Hill.
Oh, yeah?
It's an architecture firm.
Yeah, they're diamond, it's a cheap knockoff.
Yes, for 1995, I thought, I think that what could have been built there, I'm still impressed with.
Oh.
But see, that's it. But see, and that's the thing with architecture, is you have two people who have different opinions. But the question is, does it adversely affect the historic significance of the district? Or you just not like the specific architectural style?
I just don't like the building, but I don't think that's a reason to deny it.
Right. And so that, that's also, and that's kind of where modernism comes. You may not like the building, but does it adversely affect the historic district?
And that kind of steps, one step back to the policy issue, which is, do, are we going to be more prescriptive, tighter in our regulation versus leave it, leave the gray area large? And my experience has been that, and has had two meetings, of course, not much, but my experience is, is the discussion of the sensibilities of, of the people on this group, not a set of rules that, that you hold hard and fast to that make the difference on the decisions.
That's right. Well, and there are, I mean, there are, there are standards. And so the question is, when you leave those standards, there are compelling reasons, too. You know, like, they're not using wood windows here, those are aluminum window systems. Is that okay? You know, if we've said in McLaughlin, we want to see wood windows in residential buildings, or aluminum clad wood windows, is this equivalent to an aluminum clad wood window, is that okay? I mean, that's like, that's a guideline standard that then you look and say, in this proposal, is it still a valid approval criteria?
So as part of the discussion, whether we're going to remove some of those standards?
No, I think the question would be, do we need to amend and further articulate ways to review more modern architecture as an additive to the design guidelines?
And change some guidelines to standards?
No, I don't, well, I mean, that, that might be a discussion. I, I, because no matter you do a standard, there's always, gun, that's why you're a type 3 process, because you're a pointed board to make, look at those. But every time you deviate from a guideline, like, you know, you should use this type of lap siding within a historic, so if I'm going to use board and battened siding, for example, that's not really found that much in Oregon City. We have some examples, but we don't really have that much of it. So if I'm leaving and I'm proposing board and battened, why, what's my compelling reason to do it? And it is, does it overtake kind of a general sensibility of we should use siding that's found in the district?
Can I ask a prescriptive procedural question? Is a standard, having worked with the Oregon Legislature and a lot of agencies, a standard is prescriptive, it is a shall.
No, these are guidelines.
These are guidelines, so standards are guidelines as well.
Up, uh, clearly-
When they say a standard guideline, is that the same thing as a guideline?
That's a good question, and, and when we, and this is a good semantic discussion. Guidelines are should, but there are some, they're all shoulds.
They're all shoulds.
They're all shoulds.
Standards and guidelines basically are the same, have the same weight.
There are no shaws in our design guidelines. Now, there's some heavy stand, there's heavy, uh, guidelines that really emphasize, but you, the idea is, if there's a design, any design that the board approves can deviate from the design guidelines with compelling reason.
Right.
So there's shoulds and mays, shoulds and mays, but no shaws.
No shaws.
So ultimately, it's-
Because there's no, shaws would require a variance. And, and this is a type 3 board that looks at guidelines and makes criteria that meets the, the overall standard.
So ultimately, it is the discussion of the members of the, of the board. It'll be decides the issue.
When you leave the clear, kind of safe harbor of easy approval. But that's hard, you know?
Yeah.
Because once again, you're going to have, you would say, you could have five preservation professionals with masters and PhD in preservation. And they could all have five different comments about a particularly thorny, interesting one. And they all would be valid when we get into the super gray area.
That's why, don't you think that there should be some shaws?
No, I think you start, you start doing that, you start getting into some shaky ground.
Not a lot.
Here's the thing, if we create standards that must be met, they'll be based upon our opinion right now.
Yeah, that's true.
And so we're saying, the people that come after us, the next generation, aren't competent enough to make the same sort of decisions that we are.
It's got to stay the way it is.
I wouldn't have our own same sensibilities.
And I, I don't, I get what you're saying, but I think it has to stay the way it is. And it has to be interpreted by the people that are on the board at the time, that's how it is. Because whoever the dude was that I replaced, that was on this board that you said just yippity yapped? You know? And that was his personality, he wanted to drag it out. What am I? I'm completely the opposite.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I'm the opposite, I want to get in, get out, and get it done. I don't know who it is. But anyway.
On TV.
Whatever. So I guess what I'm saying is, I like to be more efficient and get things done. And I still think that it could be done in an efficient manner to get it in and get out and work together and make all that happen. Somebody else will come in and somebody on this board may want to be chair and do whatever, and they could look at it differently. So I have my own perspective of what architecture should be and what good architecture is. It's different from somebody else's on this board. Ninety-nine percent of the time, up to this point, we've all been pretty in unison. But you start messing with it, then all of a sudden, we mess with this part and then this part. It's got to stay the way it is, because it will be up for interpretation forever.
And so I have, sort of the second question, second side of that same question, is are there guidelines, standards, that we currently have that we should think about relaxing to do exactly what you're saying?
I don't know about relaxing, that gets, that gets dangerous too. I think you stay with the Secretary of Interiors, the things that the city has. And you interpret it based on your experience that you have. And this board, I don't believe, will ever deviate to go to the wrong sides.
Question is, if, does it move within the gray?
You stay in the gray.
I have a lot of confidence in this board, I mean, I, I think that even though there are guidelines, we have, on many occasions, gone outside and many occasions stayed inside. Based on really sound reasoning and because we care. And I think we've made pretty good decisions, and I don't think that the public likes to be told what to do.
Well, so here's, oh, sorry, continue.
And so when you've got a board that has guidelines and some discretion, and you have a history of using that discretion in a good way, I think, why mess it up?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, do you think there needs to be better education to the neighborhood then?
You could try and try, but, you know, they're still going to come and want to either do things right or argue what's wrong with my way.
Do you think there needs to be something amended to the design guidelines in a narrative form?
As in siding, for instance.
I'm just saying, like, one option I thought is, do you just add one more page to the guideline that talks about what happens when someone proposes something that doesn't perfectly meet the standard? Or you kind of like, when this alternate approach, what the board, maybe.
It kind of shapes the gray area enough.
So the public understands that just because something doesn't meet the guidelines doesn't mean it'll be denied or approved?
No, what I think you should, I think the first sentence would be, the likelihood of your permit being delayed will be significantly greater. Because you'll have to come back and, you know, rethink your design or re-talk about your design and.
Or conversely, if you follow these, the likelihood of your permit is pretty quick.
That's right, that's right.
So the question I have is, what are you trying, with that extra page, what are you trying to communicate? What is the point?
Communicate to the, the public at large, be it the neighbor next door, the neighbor association, and potentially even applicant. What happens when you leave these design guidelines?
When you don't, when you don't adhere to the guidelines.
Well, procedurally, we have a way of dealing, do we describe those procedures?
Well, that's the question, do we talk procedurally, do we talk just in a larger narrative sense? Is it, do we need to just bring that issue up? Because all we have right now is one sentence that says, this is a safe harbor.
That, that's right, I do think that the public has a right to know what to expect. Because, and I think we should put it in writing, because it will, it will help the city justify itself when they, when we, when we find somebody that's not, that has gone off and done something that they weren't approved to do. Well, I didn't know, nobody told me.
Well, we have that, but I think it's more, maybe it's a justification for when altered designs are approved. It doesn't look like it's, that the board is making, what do you say, decisions that are one-off or, you know.
Arbitrary.
Arbitrary, arbitrary decisions.
Capricious.
Well, not as capricious because you're, maybe capricious for the next door neighbor.
The thing is, you got the guidelines, we know what they are, we go by them. But if Joe Blow Homer comes in, wants to do something, and they haven't educated themselves.
That's right.
It's on them, but it's on us to say, hey, come back and retool this.
But I'm talking about the, one of these type of projects that may be alternately okay.
But they should already know all this stuff, right?
But if I'm the next door neighbor and I look at these design guidelines that I downloaded from the website, I don't see this in any of my design guidelines, design guidelines.
Sure.
That does not exist. And why is the Historic Review Board approving those?
Yeah, it doesn't matter what happens, they'll still be opposition.
Nothing else to be decided tonight that I.
You write anything and you create something that I think would be baseless, I guess, you're still going to have opposition. You're still going to have people that are going to disagree with what you're saying. It doesn't matter, you could get it so pigeonholed like you're saying, you'll still have opposition and they'll still disagree with what you're trying to do.
And they'll be five times angrier.
Yeah.
Because you showed them that they were wrong.
You'll leave it standing.
You're supposed to be prescriptive.
So tell us, can, can, when somebody goes to the website to look at the guidelines, do they see pictures, like what was included in this package?
No, 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 they see the guidelines, so that.
So would that be helpful to have things like this?
This Preservation 14 would be good to have on the website, so they could, you know.
And that's for addition, but some, I think you could also take the addition and translate a little bit to.
But you can't, so you can't really say, this is addition, this isn't really infill. I don't know if there's a brief on it.
Sometimes infill and addition kind of meshes together.
It just seems like what we're doing, doing that extra page would be a mixed message.
Really?
You know, spittle the standards but be creative, and that sort of.
No, I.
Take that addition to the, to the big church. That was a surprise to a lot of the neighbors. When they started looking at the actual layout of what was going to happen, they were freaking out. And so there was nothing like this.
Would an extra page, the design guideline, change that, that process?
They freaked out because it was not, it was in the neighborhood and they weren't educated.
That's right.
But would adding an extra page help provide context of the process maybe? Or would it be irrelevant? I mean, that's just one example, it's not, you know, I'm, I'm anticipating future issues as well.
Sure, perhaps, perhaps we should talk about adding a paragraph that discusses commercial buildings specifically. Because we will run into some issues like the church on 7th Street. And I think it'll be important to touch on that, so that people aren't looking at the design guidelines that are primarily written towards residential architecture.
There is some commercial, yeah, you're right.
Have that expectation throughout the whole thing. Because they may pull out three sentences that are fairly specific and go, no, I think this building over here should meet that.
Is there no briefs on infill, commercial infill?
No, that's the whole idea, Secretary of Standards does not talk about infill within historic districts, because it's all based on the context of that historic district community.
Yeah, they talked about that before.
When they look at Secretary of Interior Standards, it's for additions and alterations. How does that, what you're doing, affect the building that we're talking about, the historic building? So that's what the Secretary of Interior Standards always talks about. So there's always a, there's a vast documentation for adding on to an historic building or altering a historic building. But when you build something next door, that's where there's a huge chasm in information for communities. And all you can do is kind of extrapolate these concepts through the Texas Interior Standards. But when you get completely modern infill, that, that Secretary of Interior Standards does not look at that.
Well, here's the thing.
The community is different.
I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
But what I'm also saying is, you spent four hours somewhere and you didn't get anywhere, or you didn't see anything in that meeting you're talking about. It's the same thing here. So we can keep talking, or I could say we're done.
I'm glad that we had this conversation, because I feel that you are, I'm hearing kind of a common voice back.
For the most part.
You are saying, keep the guidelines generally as they are, keep them our ability to interpret alternate designs. And maybe future work session, maybe add a narrative section at the most on the store. But really, we don't need to really look into our design guidelines.
No.
That's good, I mean, I'm definitely hearing that as a direction.
Mainly from Cindy.
All right, good, I mean, are you guys happy we did this?
Yes, that was good.
It's kind of a good theme.
Thank you. But here's a question for you.
Okay.
And it's just like where you live, beautiful homes. But then, like, your neighbor, who built that new house? Now, if I'm going down that street, I'd say, this is a cool neighborhood, oh, that's a pretty cool house, but that's, doesn't really fit the neighborhood. But it can go in. And the neighbors can argue that all day long.
Oh, yeah, because it's a well-designed house.
It's a killer house, but.
It is a modern house.
It's a modern house.
He took his little 1920s bungalow and popped it out to the point where I think there's a couple walls left. But, I mean, it's for the most intense part, a new house.
But that's on just about every other street, but it doesn't kill the neighborhood.
Right, but it's back to Soho versus Yonhill. When it's the one-off, it's okay, but when there's lots of the one-offs, do we reach a saturation point?
That's right.
Well. It's just like, uh, old houses in this neighborhood here, where they paint lime green and orange. That kills a house as much as anything, the neighborhood, but anyway.
Well, thank you very much for all your comments.
Did you want to, this?
Uh, no, I, I just wanted you to, to fill it.
I'd like to keep it, because I don't have that preservation brief.
Fill it, I wanted you to fill it out as a way to think about. Think about it.
Well.
They are plain parts.
Oh, Laura, very quickly, maybe we don't do that.
Laura really quickly has a request for a new transportation plan. And she's going to quickly go through an eight-slide PowerPoint, but very quickly.
From where? Everywhere?
And she has a request for you. And the reason I wanted to come talk about it, because it directly applies to the survey we just did. And how we can take information and apply it to a long-range planning. I'll just do it.
So your five minutes or less is what you said?
Sure.
So I'll be helping Nancy Crashauer. We have just started a year and a half-long process to update our transportation system plan, our TSP. Our TSP is a general guideline to the city as far as transportation is concerned. How do people get around? And how do we look at our transportation system and come up with a way where people can get around easier? Are there places where a connection should be made, say for streets, transit, sidewalks, trails that come to a head that should not? Certain things like that. And bikes. How easily can bikes get around? How are our streets designed now? We have a TSP, it was implemented in 2001. And how's it been working? Should we change things from our current design standards? Are there places where we should make more bike-friendly streets or avenues, things like that? Next slide, please. So why are we updating TSP? Since 2001, when our TSP was adopted, we started that process in the late 90s, took a few years to make. We've had a lot of changes in Oregon City. In 2004, as you know, we did a large update to our comprehensive plan. That's when we enacted our mixed-use zoning, a lot of planning principles at that time. Since then, we've also seen new TPR, or state's transportation planning rules, metro requirements as well. We're looking at things more like connectivity since then. And since it's 10 years old and we want to look ahead 20 years, it's been 10 years, it's time to do an update to that. So there's a couple of things we want to do on this TSP update. We want to make sure that we have a balanced transportation system. So we have money for future projects. What are those future projects going to be? Are they going to be equitable? Are they going to be around the spread throughout the city, concentrated in one area? We want to make sure we don't leave out certain sections of the city. Or we don't put all our money in one basket that, say, bikes and people can walk around freely as well as cars. Also, are there any things that we can find where we don't have to do any major transportation improvements? Can we fix one thing? Or maybe if we want to look at zoning in certain areas of the city and put maybe commercial in some areas where you can't walk to commercial now? So then we can avoid major transportation improvements in the future, get people out of their cars a little bit more. And then obviously want to comply with state standards as well. So who is working on this project? We got $214,000 from a TGM grant through ODOT, which is a transportation and growth management grant. The city threw in $30,000 as well. Since ODOT gave us the money, they are overseeing the project, so they're on our project team. City staff is also working on it. And we have hired a consultant, which is DKS and Associates. They have a few sub-consultants, as you can see on the screen. With this project, we will be creating a technical advisory team and a stakeholder advisory team. So technical team is going to look at more of the technical aspects of the transportation plan. And the stakeholder is going to consist of businesses, chamber, the people who develop in Oregon City, citizen involvement committee, someone from planning commission, someone from Historic Review Board. Less me being here, I'll get to that in a minute. A plethora of people right now, it's sitting, each of the groups are about 40 people. And we've sent out invitations for about 40 people per group. And then also the public is going to be quite involved in this. We have lots of opportunities for public involvement. You know, next slide. I'm sorry, sorry. So the process of updating the TSP. We are going to create, taken this large project and broken it into 12 manageable segments. Each segment, we're writing a technical memorandum on. So the technical memorandums are going to start with, what are our existing plans? What are our constraints? What do we look like now, existing conditions? Where do we want to go? And it'll start to walk through the process of development of our new transportation plan. When each tech memo comes out, we'll send it to our transportation advisory committee at the city to look at. After they look at it, it'll go to our TAT, which is the technical advisory team. After they look at it, it will go to the SAT, which is the stakeholder advisory team. And then we'll take all of those technical memorandums, put them into a TSP. And that'll go through a legislative process, which includes planning commission and city commission adoption. Now, there's a lot of steps in the process. So during each step, the, all of the technical memorandums will be posted on our website. We'll take in all the information and comments from each of these groups, revise it before we send it to the next group. So it's kind of like a living document the whole way through. Here, next up. These are the 12 manageable sections or tech memos that we will be having. You can see, it gets, some of them talk about needs and deficiencies, so that's where we're looking at. Can your kids get to school okay? Can you walk to the store okay? Is there something impeding in the way? How are our streets designed? Are they lit okay or too much? Are they wide enough, things like that? Can we do alternative street designs? The HRB is good in the perspective of context. So we're hoping the Historic Review Board could come to our groups and sit on our stakeholder advisory committee or team. And talk about how maybe if we have a standard street design, it might be different in Kenema, it might be different in McLaughlin. To talk about context. And if we should have a different street design for a historic district. Or, you know, if we apply the standard street design to Rivercrest, is that appropriate? Because that includes sidewalks. If you're just building a two-lot partition, should you build a sidewalk in the middle of nowhere? Where is that flexibility? And, and how do we write code to support some flexibility? But everyone kind of understands what's going to be built in the future. So some framework, but some flexibility. Next slide, please. So this process, we've created a website, sent out invitations for our SAT and TAT. But the first meetings won't happen until February, there's four meetings scheduled at this point. We are going to send out tech memos for people to read, they can send us back comments. And then we'll have a meeting with maybe a couple tech memos as items of discussion. So we'll only meet the four times between February and September. It's actually not scheduled for adoption until March 2013. It's actually not scheduled for adoption until March 2013 at this point, so it's gonna be sort of a long road. We wanna make sure that we get everything right and take enough time to look at our entire city. There'll also be three community meetings which are scheduled. We'll have more appearances and meetings at that time as well. And next one. So if you go to our website, which is OC Transportation Plan, it'll tell you a bit more detail and context. At this point, we're still writing some of the first tech memos. Again, there have been no meetings scheduled, but we're hoping Historic Review Board can make an appearance on, at our stakeholder advisory committee and talk about historic context, or even as someone who works or lives in Oregon City, places where you see that we could change things or do things differently, or things that you like, that we've done well.
So I have offered to be part and go to some of the meetings, but it's very important to have a citizen there to speak on historic issues. And I think Laura hasn't, has brought up the issue, but I think it really is there, is we need to kind of assert our historic context-specific sensibilities and make sure that that is interwoven into the transportation plan, so a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't somehow get adopted.
So, should we show up in mass?
No, 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 no. So I think, I, I'm, I'm more than happy to go to two of the four meetings, but, and nobody has to be decided now, but if someone wants to step up and kind of feel comfortable speaking on behalf of those issues, at least two of the meetings that come up this next spring/summer, I think it'd be very valuable, because if it's just me as staff talking, it doesn't do as much.
Not only that, you have to get all, you know, you need feedback from us.
Right, and I could do that at the, I mean, I can bring some of these tech memos back to the board, but at some point, it's important to get on the record from a citizen on historic matters, to make sure that that's interwoven into the document.
Would it be possible for the, the TSP to give each and every one of us one of those memos?
Well, I can bring those memos to, to certain work sessions, but when those four meetings are, when those four meetings come, we want, I wanna make sure there's a citizen representing historic issues at some of the meetings, so it doesn't, not just sound like me speaking.
No, I, I didn't mean that. If they could, like, send them to us electronically, then we could give you feedback.
Yeah, and I can absolutely do that through our work session.
And then we could copy everybody else on our feedback, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
And then whoever ends up going has all the information.
But what Laura does need is she needs to create a roster, so you don't have to decide tonight. But if you, anybody be willing to go to at least two of the meetings, I would love to put you down on the roster.
How many people will be attending each of the stakeholder advisory committee meetings?
About, well, we put out 40 invitations.
So it's gonna be four big unwieldy...
So 40 invitation, 40 people at one meeting?
Yep, and we have extra seats for anyone else, so we have reserved two seats for HRB, one primary person, one backup person. One person will sit, so maybe 20 will be at the table. You'll have backups that'll be sitting there and they could talk as well.
So are these large brainstorming meetings, like a charrette sort of thing? Or are you expecting all of us to give comments to a panel of people, they're gonna write down what they want?
Most of your comments will be done via email by yourself on your own time, because we're putting each of these tech memos on our website, so all we're doing is sending you a link to our website when it goes to your committee, to say, please take this and read this and let us know your thoughts. And then you email it back to us, and then we'll organize that and then talk about those at the meetings.
And that's something we can talk about at our Historic Review Board work sessions. And if we, we, you know, I think of a worst-case scenario, it suddenly comes down and we're seeing that the TSP's not creating flexibility, which I think is one of the big HRB issues, to make sure that suddenly Rivercrest is not, is not required to put sidewalks, because that's an example of a nonhistoric district that has a historic identity of no sidewalks for the 1940s. And so that may be not a time where we wanna have at random infill sidewalk, which may be in other parts of the city, that may be pro-code, so how do we insert historic, and Kenema's a perfect example, we do not want sidewalks in Kenema. So, and that is a national registered district, but how do we kind of seed those comments into the TSP to make sure that, that they're there?
So I'm, these four meetings will be initial meetings for the structuring of the technical papers.
We'll have sent you essentially homework, things to read. You, at that time, hopefully you'll have read them, send us back our comments, we can organize those for the meeting. And then we'll get to the meeting and sort of talk about it. If there are comments that we see similar, we'll talk about those, or if there's some sort of issues, we'll talk about those. So there is only four scheduled meetings right now. If we want to have extra, we potentially could have extra meetings. They're probably gonna be about two and a half hours or so per meeting, so the theory is that most of the work gets done outside the meeting. We just come together to talk about it and sort of vet out what we want.
So I guess my point is, that it's important that we get there at, within the early meetings to get the voice of historic preservation on the table, so that we're not an add-on or afterthought later. So, and your going is really important, and someone who's knowledgeable from this board can go and speak to the issues.
Yeah, and so I think what Laura's tried to do is, she's tried to put a roster together, and we, you know, I can either be, I'd like to be considered the alternate, alternate, and I'm happy to swap meetings with people, and so you don't have to commit to all four, but Laura's looking for somebody, which, if somebody wants to sign up now, great, if not, think about it.
How did you decide who to ask to be on the stakeholder committee?
Everyone we thought of, we put down. And then we'll advertise it, or it's being advertised, so anyone who wants to be on it can join, too. So right now, it's kind of open. We haven't had the rush of people to try and limit the number at this time, but it's open to anyone who wants to, any group we thought of, of any, you know, bike coalitions, pedestrian coalitions. We have seniors, we're trying to get two seniors, two high school students. I mean, we're trying to get a broad view. And then also our website, I, I'm gonna give our website a little plug here. We have a lot of good things on our website. If you've been to City of Toowallatin TSP website, they have an interactive map, and you can use Google and zoom in on a certain intersection or a certain something and leave a comment about it. We have that coming soon on our website, so...
That'd be great.
You don't even have to be at these meetings to comment, you can send us a comment, we'll put it on our website, octransportationplan.org. And then, or, you can, we have a discussion forum, which is very rare for projects, you could put whatever you wanna talk about, comment on whatever anybody else wants to talk about.
Of course.
We have a question of the month. Right now, our question of the month is, what is your favorite street in the world and why? So we're starting to think about what people value and context and things like that. You can put up photos that you like or dislike and say why. So there are different avenues to get involved, so if you're not at the meeting, that's okay. We'll still take everything, post them on our website, it'll be open to the public and to take a look at them.
And, so, yeah, and that's why I brought Laura here, just because I really wanna make sure that it's not just me talking about historic issues, and that if we're getting pushback from other groups, I wanna see pushback from us.
Thanks, Laura.
So Laura, when do you need a person ideally to step up?
Yeah, the next couple weeks, if you wanna figure it out.
Okay.